Going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the May 8, 2023 council meeting minutes?
I move-
I'm not looking at the right-
Oh, you skipped number three.
Sorry, but there's, I'm on a long agenda. What the heck? Just a minute.
So what happens when the IT guy's gone here?
IT guy's gone, things-
Yeah, everything goes to hell in any event.
Let me see here. We're just trying to come back up. Do we need to add this just in case?
It's down there.
Yeah, I think she added it. She has an amended one.
Yeah, it's, it's-
I added, I added the, the open container permit-
But we don't have that.
I don't know if we, we need to see if they need it. The special use permit.
Yeah, I've got both of those.
Got it.
Let me see if that works. So I think I'll just wait to see if they actually need it. And if we do, we'll just read it at the same time with the, the open container. Okay. Would somebody like to approve the June 12, 2023 council meeting minutes?
I approve the June 12, 2023 council meeting minutes as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay? Motion carries. Reports. Councilman Molt?
Not much. I did Deer Creek Days, like day yesterday, car show, 117 cars. And we raised over 1,700 bucks. It's going to go to the food pantry for just that car show. So I don't have any of the other stats. We haven't had a meeting yet. So when I get those, I'll update more on how we did.
Good deal. Councilwoman, none?
Yeah, the landfill met last week and the closure project is complete with the payment of the final bills. We discussed a new location for the guard station for check-in and the possibility of installing a scales. Both projects are still under consideration. Still no decision about dumping greens on Sunday as we are still considering how we could control a free-for-all dumping from out-of-district people and also need to evaluate the road stability situation so we don't have people getting stuck down there on Sunday. Hopefully at some future time, it is bad, you're right. Hopefully at some future time, we can work out a plan that allows people in our landfill district to have Sunday dumping of greens available. At this time, we are still in the process of developing policies and standard procedures of operation of the landfill, which now is a very different system than we previously had. We're struggling a little bit with some of these things, but we're working on it. And just a few quick notes. On the Douglas radio, I have been hearing some very positive advertisements for our community by the Wyoming Tourism Board. I hope some of you are hearing those too. They're really great. A quick flower note. The small planters with flowers in neat little rows downtown are very attractive and add a nice splash of color to downtown Glen Rock. And finally, thanks to the many people who dedicated time and energy to make Deer Creek Days happen. That was an awesome car show in the park where many people enjoyed wandering around these special vehicles. Lots of dedicated work, love, and a touch of cash went into every beautiful vehicle that was on display in the town park. And now, I do have some questions tonight. I thought I'd try to do better than I did last night.
Good luck.
Okay. All right, here we go. See, Mr. Mayor, we will be receiving $500,000 on impact money from the Spring Creek Windfield Project. Do we have some very specific plans for using that money in our community now?
Yes, it's, it's all, we had a whole line item and stuff that went in there. We asked for, I was going to bring that up in my report, but we asked for 1.2 million. We didn't get the money for the new sewer back truck because what we had in there showed it not showing, wouldn't be able to have one show up till almost the end of the project, which starts in August. It's 17 months. Talked with Randy, he's going to do some checking out there and see if we can't find one that's new, that's available right away so we can get it right in the first of the, of the start of the, Cedar Springs four. And if we do that, the industrial siding council said come back and they would reconsider that if, if we could find one. And so went on during the period of the, of the construction. So Randy's checking into that. But the other 105,000, there's 200,000 of it that goes to a new rescue slash, you know, to use as a vehicle. It's also a truck for the fire department and the training that's going on to get some firefighters trained back in EMS. The new, a new year-round RV dump station out in the, out in the industrial park. New bathroom and some playground equipment in the tot lot, permanent bathroom down there. And that leaves a little bit left for, we've been talking about using it for part of the offset of the first year salary for the, the new position in the police department. But that pretty much ties it up. Everything, everything we had to talk to them about, you had to, you had to justify. You know where you're going to have a dump station at, out there? Oh, well, I'll have to pick a spot out there where we're close to the road and where that sewer main comes through there. So get something built, nice water and sewer to it and add something that's free to the public to be able to dump, dump it. So that's something we've needed, especially when this goes on because we get a lot of, a lot of them come in in travel trailers and a lot of them are staying down in several of the RP parks where they don't have dumps. So they need to dump somewhere.
Sounds like a good plan. Thank you. Still no-
But we actually got 509,000, excuse me.
509? Oh, my gosh, don't forget the nine.
9,000 is 9,000.
That's probably our playground equipment. Still no MOU on the pump used by the well of the golf course?
Oh, we talked to Stephen and he did not get back to Tammy yet. He's supposed to be working on it. So I guess we'll, I'll rattle his cage again this week.
I mean, just a quick note on the golf course. It is a bit unique as it wanders through the hills, a bit challenging, and is very good condition as we maybe go into summer. They are having an increased number of people from out of town coming to Glen Rock to golf, which is a very positive way of advertising our community. The folks at golf course just want to keep the operation in order, including an MLU with the talent on that pump. They would very much appreciate getting this-
Yeah, we're, we're working on it.
Not going to shut them down or anything, but it's just be a nice little tidy item that cleaned up.
Yep.
Finally, let's talk bugs. You ready?
What bugs?
Mosquitoes.
I don't know what to tell you with the, with the rain we're getting.
Well-
Every pond of water gets mosquito larvae.
Several people have inquired about spraying for mosquitoes at South Park, especially just prior to events scheduled out there. Can this spraying be done on a regular basis to maybe knock a few of those down?
Done on a regular basis now.
spray it twice a week.
Twice a week or so?
After dark, you have to spray after dark because of the bees, the honeybees.
Okay, twice a week. So there must really be a lot of them out there.
The amount of water we got, yeah, you're going to have a lot.
Yeah, the amount of water we got standing and running out through South Rec and all around town is-
I think they're all vacationing at my house.
Are they?
Yeah.
And they're kind of vicious.
They're coming to my house.
Yes. So just put up a sign.
Well, and if it keeps getting worse, we may have to pick that up more than twice a week. But the guys, you've always-
More than eight miles an hour, we can't spray it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true.
Easier said than done.
Yeah, very easier said than done, true.
Buy a few cases off and start hitting that up.
I think the sign is a gate three off.
Back in the day, we could use DDT. What the heck? Don't worry about it.
Well, thank you, Randy, because I know that, I would just ask by a few people, you know, what's going on? Mosquitoes, like eight is alive out there. I haven't gone out there, so I don't know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There's so much water around South Rec that we can't take care of. We're not allowed to. It's not on our property. So they don't want us spraying or shooting the pellets and stuff. So we, we have to deal with what we can deal with and go from there.
That's just like the landfill. The federal government tells you how to do it, don't they? Thank you.
We know about the money coming from the industrial siding council. It'll come in in equal payments over 17 months. That'll go into the revenue side of this year, this year and some of it in the following year's budget. And there'll be some stuff in line items for expenditures, so it'll help cover some costs. So moving on with reports. Councilman Kincaid?
Just that I met briefly with Wonder Wash, the owners of that, and they're very, still very interested in putting a car wash down here. So we're trying to hook up with all partners involved to meet with us and pick a location. But something very, very much they want to do, so be exciting if we can get a car wash down here.
Okay. Councilwoman Cullen?
I didn't get to see a lot of Deer Creek Days events. However, everything that I heard was very positive and the Lions Club fried onions were delicious as usual. That's the only reason to go to Deer Creek Days for me. So I think everybody did a good job, tried real hard.
You saw the best part of the fried onions.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I had them last night.
Yeah. Good, good, good.
Okay, Tammy, Clerk?
The only thing I have is that we would like to schedule the next work session for July 17th at 5:00, if that works for everybody.
No, she sent out an invitation for it.
I accepted.
What was it for, July what?
July 17th.
Right there, you got your finger on it.
I have an appointment at 4:00. I'll try and make it in Casper.
Okay.
Okay. Kelly, Treasurer?
Evening, Mayor and Council. I have nothing at this time.
Randy, Public Works?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The crew's been busy with water meter replacement, parks work, garbage collection. When they had a water leak on Deer and First Street last Thursday, it was a beam break on the water, main water line. And mowing and spraying and mosquito spraying and street sweeping and patching holes. They got the dirt patch machine oil finally showed up, so. And they've been doing setup and cleanup after Deer Creek Days. Just want to let you know I'll be leaving tomorrow afternoon, going to Cheyenne for two days for training for a water conference, so.
Randy, how did Deer Creek Days come out? Did they leave it pretty well cleaned up for you?
Pretty much, yeah. Pretty much.
Good.
Yeah, it wasn't bad.
Randy, do you have any information on sunup area, if they're going to mow those lots up there?
That'll be him. Tried to talk to Chad today.
They're out of, out of hand. When they're going over the top of your own privacy fence, over six foot high, that's pretty bad. I can't even get in to do a fire lane and there's three other residents up there having the same issue, so.
I'll get hold of Chad.
Thank you.
Do you have any thing on the list for Wednesday for the walk-through, the early, the year walk-through for Boys and Girls Club in the square?
The only thing that April and I could come up with is a center tree is dying. And Jared, I made him aware of that today.
Okay.
April will be going with you, so.
Okay. There's no other questions for Randy. We'll move on to Lyle. Evening Inspector.
Evening, Mayor and Council. 39 building permits to date. Got a reminder out there for compliance. I'm going to start ramping that up and, and talking to people that are not mowing their yards and their weeds. We'll get on the ones up on the sunup bridge. Also getting on too many cars on lots, so giving that out to people, the fair warning that you're allowed to have one vehicle that's not running and not registered. And we've got several that are way over that. So we're going to give them a warning and then start giving out fines per vehicle, so get them to move those. And then the sunshades, all the material is on site. They're reducing the shades, haven't seen one yet, so I'll be getting ahold of him and seeing when they're going to be showing up. And then he was supposed to get back me on bolts, so high bolts were something that we were curious about, whether they showed up or not. That's all I got.
Okay. Police Chief Calder Felton?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Don't have a whole lot tonight. Deer Creek Days went pretty well. Got a lot of walking done. My legs are a little sore. Guys did awesome, had a good time, so big thanks to Public Works for the putting up and taking down everything that they did. The parade went really well because of them and everything else, street closures and such went really great, too. Had to call them out a couple of times, actually, so we almost lost the Lincoln Building.
Jared's not here this evening, so we will move on to items from the floor. Is there anything, items from the floor this evening?
Sir Mayor and Council, I think Deer Creek Days went beautifully. The, I was impressed with the car show. I was impressed with the food vendors and the activities that went on. It really was a nice family affair. I really enjoyed it. The only negative thing I have is I've been out to the rodeo arena to watch the rodeo and I spent 20 minutes fighting off the bloodsuckers and so I gave up and came home. But that was the only thing. So Deer Creek Days is coming, or Hogfest is coming up. And Randy, can we get you to do something with it up there? It was really bad.
It's fixed, Randy. They both dropped the bomb.
So, okay, all right. Now, we have, I have some other questions to ask. We went to the Deer Creek Association out there, grazing association, and they said that the road was put out there, that Blacktop Road was put out there when we had the swimming pool out there and that the city used to hatch the holes years ago. Well, it's full of potholes again and we, for safety reasons, we don't want anybody to have a bike wreck out there. Is there some way we can get the city to come out and put some patch in it?
They are pretty bad.
It is bad. And it's scary because nobody wants an accident.
When's the last time we even, we, I don't know that we made ourselves responsible for that road since the, since the pool and stuff was taken out off the state land. So I don't know that we have time or that if they would fit that in because I don't know who actually the road belongs to.
Well, the city put it in.
No, we didn't put it in, Sharon. The road was there, it got paved and it-
It was a-
You can't tell me whether or not it was a dirt gravelled road. I don't know if the town paved it or not. If it was, it was a thin, thin mat. It wasn't a regular four-inch layer, so I can't tell you who or when it got done.
Well, last year, Abate went out there and patched it, but they're asking the city to do it this year. Then we have one other question, and if it's a yes or no. On Saturday, the American Legion is going to go out and do a presentation for the opening of Hogfest and Abate would like to know if they could set off just a small amount of fireworks to represent America and, at noon on Saturday. The fire department will be out there and raise the flag if they don't have an emergency. And I said I would come tonight and ask.
Something we'll have to ask Council whether or not they want to do that.
You know, you're shooting those off in the-
I don't know what kind they're talking about.
Rodeo arena or over in the ballpark?
No, this is out of South Rec.
Yeah, but we're at and we're not.
At the arena or in the grass area?
It makes a difference.
I think it would be in the rodeo arena.
As long as it would get cleaned up because we don't know what the grass conditions will be at that time, whether it'll dry up, be dried out by then, Sharon.
And it won't be anything excessive, I can guarantee it.
I'll talk to the fire department about that.
I haven't yet, but I wanted to ask permission before I ever went.
Well, I can't-
And they're going to be there, the fire department is.
I won't speak for Sean and those guys. That's something you'll have to ask them. I'm sure they'll be-
But it's okay with you guys?
You know, to do that, the only, the only thing that would be is if our, if it quits raining and it really gets warm and that grass condition changes out there, then that might be a whole different story. Then it might not be it.
And you might want to put a specific timeframe.
It's at noon on Saturday.
Noon to 12:30 and then no more, for instance.
Yeah, you know, it's only at noon on Saturday when they sing the National Anthem and blah, blah, blah.
Can we do this on the condition that the environmental conditions are safe at the time?
Right. I agree with that very much. Okay?
And the fire department.
I'll get ahold of Sean.
Yeah, you need to talk to Sean.
Okay. And I thank you. But like I said, Deer Creek Days was awesome. Have a good night.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Any other items from the floor? If not, we'll move on to new business.
Unfinished business.
Well, I call it new, I'm sorry.
We're getting used to that.
I've been here for way longer than most of you, so. Let me see.
We're just teaching you new tricks, Bruce.
Well, it's kind of hard to teach old dogs new tricks.
It's possible, though.
Let me see, just, okay, that's 745, so ahead of that one, so. Okay, the first one is town, Glen Rock Ordinance Number 744. It will be, therefore it be ordained by the City Council. It's Council of the Town of Glen Rock in the State of Wyoming as follows Section 1 amending- Ordinance Number 20.09.101 rates of the Town of Glen Rock Municipal Code. It's here, by amendment, as the following is the definition of, of units. This is second reading. Is it the third reading on this one? Okay. Been back and forth in here trying to plan it because they're kind of back and forth. Third reading, so is there a motion?
I move that we pass Ordinance 744 for definition of unit of sewer rates.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on 744? If not, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay? Motion carries. Moving on to Ordinance Number 745, an ordinance concerning a franchise agreement with Mountain West Technology Corporation. This is the one that's second reading. Today's what, the 26th of June, 2023? Is there a motion?
I move that we pass Ordinance 745 on the second reading as presented.
It's been moved. It's a motion, second, did you just second it or did you motion it?
I motioned it.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed by nay? Motion carries. Our next order of business is a, right now is a open container permit for SCA Shire of Plattfordham. It's medieval recreation camping event. We need to make a motion first, but then we'll let you talk. Is there a motion?
I move we approve open container permit for Kelly Christensen.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Now, discussion? Kelly, would you like to get and talk to us, please?
Sure.
Let us know what's going on?
So we are the Society for Creative Anachronism, Shire of Plattfordham, and we have historically put on an event out at South Rec, which is a medieval camping reenactment, recreation, and educational program. We are a nonprofit group, so it's, it's really our aim to research, recreate, and teach arts and sciences that would have been around in the medieval times. Couple of those have to do with making your own alcoholic beverage. So we are quite sure the people that are attending will probably be bringing some of their own creations, but, and I got to tell you, these guys like to have fun, so they'll be having alcohol out there. I'm sure, I'm quite sure. Not for resale. We will not be serving, we will not be selling, we're not, but I don't want to go outside the law and not have an open container permit that allows us to do that without incurring legal difficulties for the people that have it.
And where are they going to be imbibing? What specific area?
Probably the camp area down-
But you've got red on your drawing?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. So like-
It takes all the camping area.
Yeah, so pretty much all the camping.
Yeah, evidently I'm putting this upside down.
So for the, basically from the concession stand, we're not going to allow it in the arena or the baseball diamonds, baseball park art. But just basically the camp area. I don't know where they may wander with their beer, glass of wine or whatever, but as they're camping.
Okay.
Chief Felton, do you have any problems or issues with this archery? It's, it's always been a good organization, hasn't it?
And they're aware that there's no glass containers?
No glass containers, and we do risk ban all adults.
Okay.
So we can identify immediately whether-
Do you need any extra garbage dumpsters or anything out there other than what's there now?
No, we pretty much come self-sufficient and, and leave the same way.
Public Works to take a few extra out if you need them.
Yeah, no, probably not. If you got the regular dumpsters out there, we pretty much, that's part of being a responsible citizen, I guess.
In your reenactment and stuff going on out there, what weapons are you going to be dealing with this year?
Retan sticks. And probably some rapier, some like fencing.
Okay, no bows and arrows or anything? Are you shooting any?
I don't.
It does say.
Well, that, you know, that was the one, you did it before because-
Yeah, yeah.
The reason I'm asking that, and we, we can probably bring it up now, is you guys had a special use permit back then, since that's been annexed into the Town of Glen Rock for you guys to be able to do that. We need to give you a special use permit to be able to do, shoot, and it's projectiles, you know, with your bows and stuff.
Right.
We did that back in 2019. We just update this for this, for this, for the 17, or 7, or 714 through 716.
Okay, this is our Archer General, so I'll let him speak.
I just wanted to ask instead of letting you sit down and make you get back up because I asked Tammy about it today. I thought if you guys were going to be there, you're probably going to be doing that again this time.
Yes, Your Honor. To date, we only use a target class bow. There are no compound bows allowed.
Yes.
Most of the bows shot average are like your modern recurve averaging about 30 pounds, which aren't even legal to hunt deer in this state.
But since it's, but since it's set down with our ordinances, we have to give you a, we wanted to give you a special use permit to cover it, so everything, you guys are covered good out there, yeah.
Target points, no broadheads, anything like that. And we have specific rules for setting up the ranges as far as widths, distances, being shot, how much room we have to have. Any minor that shoots has to sign a specific waiver and must be accompanied by their guardian or they are not allowed to participate.
Okay.
Do you have to make a second motion for the special use?
Well, we can, we can vote on the, on the open container, then we can make, can make a motion for the special permit after that, so we don't have to amend this one. Any other questions on their open container permit? If not, I will call for a vote on the open container. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay? Motion carries. Somebody like to make a, a motion on a special permit for the use of their bows and different apparatus and swords and whatever out there, in case you're throwing anything or throwing your axes, just so it meets our, covers us under our ordinances.
I move that we issue a special use permit for this event on August 12 at the South[1791.52] I move that we issue a special use permit for this event on August 12th at the South Recreation Complex.
August 14th. July 14th. Well, because you're looking wrong. This is old. It'll be July 14th through the 7th.
Yeah, July 15th will actually be the day of most of the activity.
Most activities on the 15th. No problem. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on a special permit?
Excuse me. So the special permit that we've used in the past only allows a temporary lift on archery-related restrictions. We've never-
And that's, that's, that's a projectile that you're shooting in. We have to cover the bows. The other stuff really doesn't-
Right. That's, that's what's in here. But it doesn't say anything about-
I don't know if you're gonna be throwing any axes or anything. That doesn't meet that. So just basically, it's your bow shooting.
Yeah. Did you have any other questions?
Are you, are they planning to shut down the whole park?
We don't shut it down, no.
I didn't think so. I was gonna double check.
I mean, it's kind of a public, we don't.
I just only ask because I sort of make sure it's the same we need to, or have to know what people are doing.
Oh, oh, for camping?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the special permit, use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Have a great time.
Thank you. We're planning to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to propose a motion for consideration by the council this evening. I move that the council develop a comprehensive plan to address the issues surrounding downtown beautification, including solving the issues with our current tree population.
I don't know that we need a motion, but that's up to you. We are working on that. I know that you've spoken to the lady from what, what's, all trees have-
All trees and capsule.
Capsule.
I just put it off because I was gone, so.
Some of those trees are coming out of that.
Is that something we should deal with at a work session or now?
We can deal at a work session, whatever. We are gonna work on it. Some of them are probably gonna have to be removed because some of them are dying, some of them are in really poor shape, some of them are growing. It's, we need the arborists to look at all of them and give us some recommendations of what we can and can't do there, or what they would recommend we do with those trees. So I think we, we just need to talk to, let them come up with a kind of an idea for us. And if they've got an idea, we need to do to them, either fertilizing or more, more or less water or whatever through the drip systems, and come up with a, kind of get something from them probably and kind of estimated cost. Because I'm sure they're gonna want to, to feed, feed all of them for the ones that can be saved, so.
I was thinking that we should have an opportunity for some type of plan where the public will have a chance to have input if they have thoughts or ideas on what they would like to see done down there. Whether it's done or not is beside the point, but it looks like we should offer them the courtesy of having an opportunity to present their thoughts on it.
Well, if you can come up with something that would be a questionnaire that we can send out to the public, either along with our, simple with our water bill, or something that can be mass mailed and get it back in a certain period of time.
And can we ask the arborists to meet with us maybe at the next work session?
I don't know if they'd have, I don't know if we could get them to be done by the, but maybe they'll be, could have it looked at by the 17th of July. All we can do is ask and see if they-
Yeah, ask if they could come up and if they're interested enough, maybe they can get into gear.
Yeah.
Well, they're interested, they just want vacations like that.
Yes, I know. I'm just thinking the 17th, we already have a work session, maybe. And I agree with Margaret that after, maybe we get some information from them, I'd be glad to help you work on something, whether it's some public meetings or sending out questionnaires or whatever. I'd be glad to help you.
We really need to have the town people have an opportunity to state if they have any thoughts or opinions. You know, they belong to the town. They should have input on what the final decision is. And we definitely need to approach this from having the trees evaluated. So we can't just be playing hit and miss and have some-
Right. Let the arborists tell us what is in the realm of reality.
That's what we, that's why we want to have them come take a look at them.
Okay, sounds good.
So we'll move on with, from there with that.
So she made a motion.
She made a motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Does somebody want to second it?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Can you tell me what the motion is again?
I move that the council develop a comprehensive plan to address the issues surrounding downtown beautification, including solving the issues with our current tree population.
I think you shouldn't limit, like, to just a suggestion just to trees because downtown beautification falls under Main Street and they're the ones bringing us those projects.
I would be happy to reconsider that motion and say a comprehensive plan to address the issues with our current tree population, if that's more satisfactory.
Yeah. The other one's a little, little too broad. So are you okay with that with a second, John?
Yeah.
Moved and seconded.
Still okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay, motion carries. Next order of business, I believe, is bills and claims. Is there a motion?
I move we pay our bills and claims.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Is there anything else to come before this council meeting this evening? If not, I would ask for somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn our June 26 meeting.
Motion is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed by nay, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.